I am?
Yeah.
Giving my boss that's up tonight.
I brought you a present.
Don't worry, I'll just take it from the car. He was gonna ask me that.
I did, because you were rolling your chair back into me, and I didn't like it much.
Well, I don't like when people roll chairs out.
You need to ask for a new chair.
My chair is fine.
Yours has a rip in it.
Oh, really?
Did you get to the Christmas tree, did you?
I'll just wish I was in her trip, too. I did.
Um, gosh.
Oh.
Would you like a little orange?
I had to meet somewhere else, too, but it looked, it downtown was beautiful always, but Christmas lights are particularly beautiful.
I'm gonna give you a watch.
Oh, wait, now let's do something. Oh, yeah, thank you, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yes, sir. Oh, no, no.
She said, come to my house, I could use some help.
Do we need sign or just show?
No, they'll have some.
Okay, okay.
We're just like, you know, I think I'm encouraging them for the day and...
Yeah.
I got it.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing at the invocation?
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Wilson? Please bow for prayer. Our Father and our God, we bow before you, grateful for your mercy. After thousands of years of history, our world should be better than it is. We tolerate evil and call it good. Forgive us that we grow numb. Stir our hearts to be aware of our sins and convict us by your word. Allow us to be sensitive to your spirit and open our hearts to the needs around us that we may be faithful in our witness for your truth. Bring comfort to those who have lost loved ones and grace to those who struggle with decisions and directions. Grant us on this council wisdom for the living of these days, in the strong name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. About to call our November seventeenth, twenty twenty-two meeting to order. We'll begin with a consideration to approve tonight's agenda. Do we have any changes, revisions, additions? Mr. Peppers?
Mr. Mayor, based on some feedback from some council members, I would request to move the consent agenda items to old business to be discussed. And also, I would request to add new business item B, a discussion and possible action on an abeyance of residential public hearing applications for a twelve-month...
Okay. So removing consent agenda items A, B, and C to old business. And then if you want to add item D. Would you repeat that for me, please?
Discussion and possible action on an abeyance of residential public hearing applications for a twelve-month period.
Okay. Additional changes or revisions? Or motions?
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members have voted for the motion. Okay. For guests and visitors tonight, we have some employee recognitions from Chief Mayor Phil. Welcome, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
So tonight, we haven't done this in a while. We haven't been able to bring officers in to introduce our brand-new officers to our mayor and council and to our citizens. So I wanted to start doing that, as we have several that have just graduated the academy and the field training program. We have a few that are here tonight that are still in the field training, but he'll be standing in front of you before long getting introduced. But so tonight, I would like to introduce to your right Officer Robin Thompson, who just graduated from Georgia Public Training Center in Pickens, and she has also graduated our field training program. And Officer Whitney Clark, who graduated from North Central, and she is in our field training program, but I think she's like three daily reports away, so we look forward to Monday. She'll be cut loose. And then Officer Adrian Turbovich, affectionately known as Turbo, because most of us can't pronounce his name, so he has came, he came to us from North Carolina where he had previous experience. And under the new post rules, we have the new equivalency of training, so if they have, if they're certified from another state, they used to have to go through the full academy. Now they come here, or if they were military police, through the Military Police Academy, when they come here, I think they take three or four classes, and then they are able to get their certification, which certainly speeds up things for us. And he has also completed his field training program, so he's a full-grown police officer now. So I just wanted to congratulate them and introduce them to council and mayor and to our citizens. And lastly, those were the newest officers, now for the old man. Sergeant Jesse Hamilton from our Criminal Investigation Division had his ten years last week, and he was in the hallway last week, and he said, wow, it really goes fast. And those of us with a little gray on our head know it really does go fast. But he has gotten ten years, and I think it's hard for him to believe and us to believe, but Sergeant Hamilton has been a dedicated employee with the city of Canton for, for ten years. He is, he has had excellence for ten years. He leads our detective bureau, and when I say that, I mean, he leads our detective bureau. When they're out on things, he's out there. We had an incident today, and we were supposed to be having our Thanksgiving luncheon, and we stood out there till two, two-thirty before we were able to come back, but he was out there with his detectives and leading from the front. So Jesse's done a great job for us. I look forward to the next ten years. I can't necessarily guarantee I'll be here to see him in ten years, but maybe. But anyway, I want to congratulate you, Sergeant Hamilton, and I appreciate everything you do for the city of Canton.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Chief. Sergeant Helmton, thank you for your decade of service, and our three new officers, welcome to the city of Canton, so. You have in your packet our minutes from the November third meeting, our draft minutes. Are there any corrections, additions, or revisions, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. Thank you. Couple informational items this evening. These are informational reports, technical reports from our staff. These are for information only, no discussion. Beginning with item A, information only, present, presentation of staff report, case ZCA two-two-one-zero-dash-zero-zero-four, request to amend the current zoning conditions for thirty-nine point nine-eight acres of the Park Village development. Mr. Green?
I thank you, Mayor, members of council. As you stated, this case is a zoning condition amendment. Park Village, or this portion of Park Village, was originally shown to be single-family homes. The property has been purchased by Cherokee County, I believe, in two thousand nine. The Development Authority is seeking a change in conditions or some additional allowed uses for office, light industrial space to be allowed to go out there. This will be before you again on the first Thursday in December as a public hearing item. Your staff report will have a lot more substance to it then, as I get comments and feedback from the other staff members.
Thank you, Mr. Green. And the second item for information only is presentation of staff report, cases RZ zero N two-two-zero-N dash zero-zero-six and CUP two-two-zero-N dash zero-zero-seven, request to rezone and obtain conditional use approval for seven-ten Marietta Road, twelve-fifty and seventy Marietta Circle.
Again, this is an informational item only. Mr. Latimer has purchased twelve-fifty and seventy a Marietta Circle. He already owns seven-ten Marietta Road. These parcels that he has just purchased, he is looking to construct five quadplex buildings, renovate two single-family homes, and renovate one of those single-family homes into a duplex unit. This will be phase two of phase one, and that all the properties will be consolidated into one single parcel. They have had their community input meeting. One of the residents out there did have some concerns about traffic coming in and off of Marietta Circle, and I believe they are looking at, at ways to restrict that, so the traffic to the project comes in only off of Marietta Road. I believe there's some other issues out there that he is working on, and again, there'll be more substance to the staff report during the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Any analysis this evening? We had no one sign up for our ten-minute public input meeting tonight, input tonight, so we will move into old business, items that were previously on our consent agenda. Beginning with item A, approval to the resolution to transmit the annual update to Canton's capital improvement element and five-year short-term work plan for the impact fee program. Mr. Patton?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members. The reason for requesting this item to come off of the consent agenda is earlier this week, and I did email you a copy of the memo from another staff member in discussions. It was requested that city council consider adding Harmon Park improvements into the capital improvements element for the parks' recreation portion of the CIE. I did email out an amended capital improvements element to the council members yesterday that did reflect the addition of Harmon Park improvements. The estimated cost for these improvements is four million, three hundred thousand dollars. I'll answer any questions council members have in regards to this, and would request council consider approving this amendment and approving the resolution to transmit for the review process through Atlanta Regional Commission and Georgia Department of Community Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. Any questions or discussion? Ms. McGrew?
Mr. Patton, have any improvements been added to the list of Harmon Park since we've last discussed? Is this a new improvement?
From the memo, would include a ten, eleven-foot-wide multi-use concrete trail, additional parking, full-size basketball court, sixty-by-ninety mini-pitch soccer field, stadium-style seating, replacing fencing on existing ball field, construction of prefabricated picnic pavilion, and other items.
Thank you.
It is the project as it was approved under contract a couple months back.
At the amount approved, correct? Any further questions, comments? Any motions?
I'll move to approve the resolution to transmit the annual update to the capital improvements plan and five-year short-term work plan, including Harmon Park.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All members in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. Item B, approval to award towing services contract to Malden Body Shop, Inc. Mr. Ingram?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. At the last council meeting, it was presented a draft agreement. I mentioned that there was one small change. I provided council a redline copy that included a change to that last paragraph. I think I shared that with Mr. Dyer. So tonight, unless council has any other questions or, or needs something addressed, I would ask for a motion to approve the contract with Malden Body Shop for towing services.
Any questions for Mr. Ingram?
I do have a question. Mr. Ingram, there was one, just for clarity, there was one other submission, I think it was Daniels, and one of the, I guess, one of the drawbacks of their application was the fact that they, they don't have the equipment to handle the heavy, big-rig trucks. Is that, is that factual?
That is correct, sir, and they would have had to outsource that to another company.
Okay. Other than that, it was a pricing thing?
They, they were very similar. As a matter of fact, both go based on the pricing that is set by the county, the county, and forgive me the word, Counting Towing Committee, and so that is set by state and the county. That, that's not set by the city.
Thank you.
Any further questions or discussion?
I make a motion to approve the towing services contract to Malden Body Shop.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. Thank you. Item C, approval of twenty-twenty-three council meeting calendar dates?
I wanted to talk about it.
Okay. Ms. Schmidt?
I just wanted to talk about either moving the September twenty-first meeting back a week or forward a week because of Cherokee County Schools' fall break. Hate to have to have a council member fly in at the last minute.
Yeah, I also, if I'm way, I also chimed in with Mr. Peppers after we saw that, you know, we've got several council members with children and staff members with children, so it would be something I would support for sure.
So looking at if we move that meeting either a week before or a week after, that would just be, I guess, two meetings in a row on either side.
Right.
Correct.
I mean, after? So the twenty-eighth, September twenty-eighth?
Is that your motion?
I move that we change the council meeting dates from September twenty-first to September twenty-eighth and adopt the rest of the calendar.
Second.
So a motion and a second. Further discussion? Mr. Carlo?
That's sufficient for staff, Mr. Peppers. That won't cause any trouble, why, ways in the future, but we'll make it...
We should be able to make that person.
Perfect.
I mean, I don't, I can't recall, you know, we've done this in the past, we've done it in the past, like when the holidays, you know, conflict, but I think, you know, doing it this far ahead of time, we have plenty of time for advance notice for citizens, which I think is the most important thing, so. Any further discussion? We'll have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. Move forward with item D, in addition to the old business, discussion and possible action on a public, discussion and possible action, on abeyance of public hearing applications for a period of twelve months. Did I get that correct? Oh, that's new business. Okay. Sorry, item B. Sorry. Lots of changes, though. Just, so we'll continue old business here with item, I guess it would be D now, discussion and possible action on cases ANNX two-two-zero-nine-dash-zero-zero-four and RZ oh-nine-two-two-zero-nine dash zero-zero-five, request to annex and rezone two-point-three-eight acres located at the end of Roland Drive for the purpose of inventory storage. Mr. Green?
Mayor, members of council, the applicant for this, for these two rezoning and annexation requests have asked that this matter be tabled tonight. They are attempting to get in contact with the three abutting property owners to get letters of support for their requested a ten-foot, ten-foot buffer along their common property line. I do not believe that they have made contact yet with those abutting property owners, so they have asked that this be tabled until December.
Okay. Council, like, discuss that, or any, any discussion around that, or any issues with that, or any motions to?
Motion to postpone until the first meeting in December.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. Item E, so you guys are just trying to confuse me tonight, so, but discussion of amendment to the city's plant palette and prune trees in the overlay zone is recommended by HGOR. Mr. Green?
The council has been provided with some suggestions for trees to be added or deleted to the community standards overlay zone plant palette. This presentation has been given by HGOR, and I believe it has been accepted. In the letter that was provided by HGOR, they are also looking, by our interpretation, to provide an updated city plant palette overall, which would affect table one-oh-three-dash-eleven, wherein all of our overstory and understory trees are listed. I believe Mr. Peppers has been in contact with the HGOR representative, and he has stated that that was an oversight of not providing us with the table one-oh-three-eleven, and he will be getting it to us. This has been advertised for public hearing on December first, and between now and then, we will get you an updated list with the plant palette, and I believe you already have the one for the overlay standard zone, so that'll be coming up in December.
December first meeting? Okay. Thank you. Now we'll move into new business. Item A, discussion and possible action to grant Georgia Power easements on two parcels for the Pope Water Pollution Control Plant. Mr. Hatabian?
Yes, Georgia Power is providing two independent sources to the plant for redundancies and thereby eliminating generators. So they're bringing up a new line up Highway Five, and they need to install a couple of poles near, crossing the river near Legion Field, and then run it underground and, and come over to the plant. So they just need easements to run, set those poles and, and run those lines. They're, they're kind of paralleling their existing easements in, in some areas, but... And reason for action is they're trying to get their poles set hopefully next month.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Hatabian? Discussion? Motions?
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then now item B, discussion and possible action to prove an abeyance of public hearings for a period of twelve months. Mr. Peppers?
Good evening. Good evening. Provided you a memo earlier this week, but as your city manager, I would request that the city council consider an abeyance of applications for public hearings related to residential projects effective immediately and for a period of twelve months. During this period, the city would not accept applications for residential projects that require annexations, rezonings, master plan amendments, zoning condition amendments, or conditional use. In a sense, the city would be placing a pause on new residential projects or changes to existing residential projects in an effort to review and discuss development patterns, long-term growth plans, infrastructural projects, and impacts, and land use. As I presented to council at the fall retreat, the city is moving quickly through items addressed in our roadmap for success, and that was adopted in December of twenty-twenty. We're moving into the second phase of those projects and programs in the roadmap, which include closely looking at long-term growth, areas for redevelopment, sustainability efforts, land planning, and infrastructure. We are also entering the midpoint of a current comprehensive plan on file with the state of Georgia. This ten-year document provides an option to the city for a midterm or five-year update that would be due in February twenty-twenty-four. As part of that process, council could take the following abeyance period to integrate new data points and public conversations into our desired growth patterns for the city. Some of those data points include the Thomas P. Miller Housing Study Update, which is scheduled for formal delivery later this year, the Canton Transportation Master Plan, which is scheduled for delivery in January twenty-twenty-three, our growth boundary agreement with Cherokee County, which may come in the first quarter of twenty-twenty-three, our land use map, which needs reviewing, which would be due by February twenty-twenty-four, a recreational master plan, which will go out for contract in early twenty-twenty-three, and our tax allocation district master planning that we hope to have go out in early twenty-twenty-three. In addition to the deliverables above, the city will also be nearing completion of phase one of the Water Pollution Control Plant Expansion Project in mid-two thousand twenty-three. This period will allow a reflection for the council as it relates to some longstanding zoning and master plans that have not had any action moving forward. It will also allow the potential to streamline zoning categories and review development standards, all of which could include opportunities for public input. This request comes following consultation with department heads throughout our city organization. I'm happy to answer any questions related to this topic, and I am asking that you act on this tonight so that we can get ahead of any potential applications that might come after an abeyance period. I will tell you a couple of things in addition to that. You know, I think about there, there are pockets of the city that have approved zoning and master plans on them that have never been developed. Edwall Shoals is a great example, where we have large-scale acreage, which has never had development take place on it. We may want to look at that master plan. There is a pod of Laurel Canyon that's off of Shoal Creek that has never been developed that allows another three hundred units of residential, and Shoal Creek is kind of a bad road, if you've been out there. There are other portions of the city that have been approved for master plan development, have seen some construction take place, but have lagged a little bit behind in that development. Great Sky is a perfect example of that. An abeyance will mean that you will not hear any new cases or hear any changes to existing zoning, but it will give an opportunity for those developments that have been approved to continue their development, or give you an opportunity to look at those sites and consider alternative zoning for them. I think this is a good opportunity for the city. I think it's a great opportunity for the council and our residents to have a good conversation about what we want to see next in this next phase as we continue on our roadmap, and I am happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers. And just for clarification, this is for, for new residential projects only. It's not, not commercial.
That is correct, and we have provided you a draft or a copy of a resolution that would allow us to enact that abeyance formally, starting immediately.
Thank you. We all certainly trust our staff and the information and data they're providing us, and we discussed at our council retreat this, this weekend extensively. We have made great progress on our roadmap in the past two years and completed many of the projects that we, we set out to accomplish in the next fifteen years, so kudos to everyone on the team for the great progress we've made. We've also began and are nearing completion on many of these studies that provide us additional data to inform our decisions going forward, and as we do additional planning... us additional data to inform our decisions going forward, and as we do additional planning, community development, and growth bounty agreements, it just gives us opportunity as we begin Phase 2 of the roadmap to, to synchronize all this information and data and integrate it into our roadmap in Phase 2, but also solicit additional public input from our citizens to inform the roadmap development from the beginning and have them inform, you know, the way that we go forward with Phase 2. So I just think it's a great opportunity to really be thoughtful and intentional about, you know, how we move forward from this point forward, given all the new information that we have, and as we continue to strategically plan how Canton grows in the future, so. And again, it doesn't, doesn't pause anything that's already in process, which is a lot and a lot that has already been approved, so in a sense, it gives us a chance to catch up on all of that, but also integrate all the new information and data that we're going to be reviewing and reviewing over the next 12 months. So I want to thank staff for bringing this forward and thank them and council for thoughtful discussions at our retreat and throughout this process, as we looked at this and determined the next steps going forward for, for the city, so. With that, I think we, again, we discussed this extensively at the, at the retreat, and we have great information and recommendations from our staff. I would ask if there's not any further discussion or do we, if we have a motion to approve this abeyance?
I have a motion, Mayor.
Yes?
Motion to approve the resolution of an abeyance for residential applications for the period of 12 months.
Second.
So a motion and a second. Is any further discussion? Ms. McGrew?
Yes. I wanted to say, excuse me, to council that this is the best time to do this. I'm really happy that we're doing it because it's going to coincide with the growth boundary review. It's going to coincide with the land use map review and the comprehensive plan, so we couldn't have picked a better time to do this, even though we've discussed it for the last three or four years off and on about what we need to do for development. I thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. McGrew. Further discussion? Questions? So we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. All members voted for the motion. Mr. Peppers?
I do have a few items for you tonight. First and foremost, I've given you a copy up at your seat. This is a rendering that we received from Lou Oliver as it relates to that Laurel Canyon site that we're calling Cottage Court at this time. Mr. Oliver was tasked with trying to do a site plan for that particular site as a housing project for the city. We are giving you this rendering. We will, we will make sure it's available on our website as well. Our goal is to have Mr. Oliver come and present before council. Scheduling may push that back into January, but we hope to have him here before council to talk about this particular site plan that he's done. You'll notice on the plan, it appears that there are 10 units, and three of those units have accessory. Nowhere near 20, 30, 82, or whatever numbers are out there, only these 10. But we will have him come before council, and we will make sure that, that our, our friends up in the Laurel Canyon area are aware when he does come so that they can come and listen to his presentation. But I wanted to get that to you ahead of time. Second thing I have for you is, is a document that I mentioned to you at treat. It is the October 2022 Operations Report. This is what we hope to produce on a monthly basis. This is what will go on the website. These are data points from the various departments that we hope will be informative to you and to the public about things that are going on in our, in our operations. As you can see, we have information on there about some of the financial data of the city. We have things related to our personnel. There's a section on the police department that includes information on major cases, community events, public works projects that have occurred, information on licensing permitting, which includes new business licenses that have started, and things related to commercial construction, inspections as it relates to our building and safety services department. Engineering has a section that relates to capital projects that include transportation projects and updates on those. You'll see a section in there on planning and zoning where it outlines the different applications that were received during that particular month, and, and information about impact fees, information on our utilities department on new meters and things like that, and then under economic development, we have some activities as it relates to, to those projects as well. There is a section on there for municipal court related to court cases. There is information about REDS speed, and then we have a section on there about Freedom of Information Act requests and public meetings from clerk's office. As we move forward in the year, if there's other potential items that don't fit within those categories, we'll make sure that we highlight those as well. So I did want to get you a copy of that tonight. We'll be placing that on the website under the city managers tab tomorrow. The second thing I wanted to do, a third thing I wanted to do was just go over some items from the fall retreat, just to give you an update on some of the, some of the items that we discussed there. As you heard, we've already approved an abeyance for the next 12 months on residential public hearing applications. Mr. Patton has reached out to Mr. Oliver about setting a date for him to come and present to council about the Laurel Canyon site. We do have a meeting that's being planned in the next two weeks with Mr. Paul Robinson of sepia to discuss the Tanner Place and Jefferson Circle properties, since those have been approved for RAD by the state of Georgia. On the South Canton Park project, Mr. Hatabian is working each on water tank site options and, and what that might look like in that area. We did reach out to John's Creek. If you do a quick Google search on dog parks, the one in John's Creek routinely ranks very high, so we reached out to the city out there to learn a little bit about their process, who their contractor was, and their designing process as well. If you get a chance, this may be a little bit out there, but Flex, which is, which is a type of, of public-private dog park in the Atlanta area, you may want to look at that. We received that comment from our friends at Cherokee County as a potential option to look at. Bethany will be providing you with a transportation update on projects around December. On the recreation master plan, we did reach out to Cherokee County to find out who had been working on some of their particular projects. Two engineering firms that they recommended were TSW, which the city has worked with, they did our LCI, they also did the county's trail plan, and LOSE, which has done some work on the county on specific parks, including veterans parks. We'll be reaching out to them to have a conversation. The two items from the police department that related to disposition of the old handguns and special event pay will be coming to you in the December agenda. Mr. Hatabian is working on water pollution control plant tour dates. We may wait and tour the water plant when we get a little bit further along with those particular projects. We are working on contacts as it relates to development projects that are in the pipeline but have not yet started. We had a meeting earlier this week with Cherokee County about the growth boundary to kind of understand where they were coming from, see what they have worked on, worked on with the other municipalities, so we'll be bringing you more information on that. We've had some initial internal discussions about how we will handle master planning for the exit 16 area and TAD. Tomorrow at 2 o'clock, we have a meeting with H G O R to talk about trails and trail design up at Lake Canton. We have reached out to EPD as it relates to Lake Canton, and they are looking at our management plan to get, get familiarization with it, but they don't seem to have an issue with the changing of the name. They seem to think that will be pretty easy. Tomorrow, if all goes well, we will close on the property with Cherokee Office of Economic Development, buffs for light industrial, headquarters and technology jobs. We have started working internally on the roadmap and what we've accomplished in the last fiscal year and how we will communicate that out to the public. Lauren Johnson is working specifically on that. One of the things we've identified is creating webpages for each of the tenants, and each webpage would have a highlight of projects accomplished, links to additional projects, information, what have you. The police department's already been in contact with the Cherokee Homeless Coalition, and we're working on getting a list of resources for that. One thing that I would bring to your attention was a meeting that occurred earlier this week with Canton. We met with local civic organizations, and they are working on putting together a day of service for MLK Day, which is January 16. One of the suggestions that came out of that meeting was putting together what are called homelessness kits, so those are kits that can be handed out to individuals as well as teenage hygiene kits for individuals who don't have the wherewithal to afford certain products. So we look forward to pushing that out in the next couple of weeks, and we'll make sure you're included in that. And then additionally, we have started the process of reviewing our special event application. Staff met this week to look at that. The last thing I have for you tonight is an update on some cases that will come before you that snuck in under the abeyance. In January, you will get a public hearing as it relates to cases ANNX 2210-006, CUP 2211-7, rezone 2211-002, which is a request for annexation, rezoning, and conditional use permit for 14.366 acres to construct 114 town home unit development on Prominence Point Parkway. And you will also in January get cases MPA 2211-003, annexation 2221-004, CUP 221-005, rezone 221-006, which is a request for annexation, rezoning, master plan, and conditional use permit for 20 acres to develop a mixed residential use development, 300 total living units. This is at Putnam Road and Gale Avenue just north of the Publix at Prominence Point on Marietta Highway. That's all I have for you. Do you have any questions for me?
Had a busy week since you returned from the retreat, so thank you very much, so impressive as always. Any questions for Mr. Peppers? Thank you. Thank you. Good work. Any council introduced items? We didn't have any to get in, just always double check, so. Just have a few brief things. I just did want to remind everyone that the voters did approve the next sploß, which is great news for Canton. Just as a point of reference, we had $49 million approved for the next sploß. Our last sploß was $24 million, so more than double of where we were at last, so it's going to be great revenue for projects in the city. And we talked a lot tonight about our retreat this past weekend, so I wanted to thank our council and our staff who attended that, showed up ready to work and ready to get the job done, as always. Again, we reviewed our roadmap, our 15-year roadmap that started in 2022, and again, we're going to be reporting out to the public what we have accomplished on that, but I'm happy to say that we, we were able to, we will be able to say that at least 70% of those projects that were projected to be achieved over the next 15 years have been, already been completed, so great news, and we'll be moving on to bigger and better things, so. Great work, and thank you guys for showing up on the weekends and, and taking time away from your family and friends to do the work on behalf of our citizens and, and do it very well, so. And since this is our last meeting, we won't have another meeting before the Thanksgiving holidays, wanted to wish everyone and our citizens and on Team Canton, happy Thanksgiving, and hope you have a great time with your friends and family. I'm grateful for this city, grateful for the opportunity to serve the city. I'm grateful for everyone's enthusiasm for what we're doing and building together the coolest small town in America, and there's no other place I'd rather be, so. With that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn for this evening, so.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
My motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay? We are adjourned.